We'll call it meeting back to order, get started back here. Next up we'll do the financial report.
Get it. On their way, Mr. Chairman. Effort to take up the time, if maybe we could talk to David. About solid waste materials, I think maybe April must have got hung up somewhere.
That'd be fine. Just come on up, microphone there.
Mr. Chairman, board. Um. We have been working diligently there at the solid waste transfer facility to try to come up with some ideas and things to make things a little better. Would like to generate instead of losing. Report that the report that the loader is at present time working. And the caterpillar loader, the engine had been taken out and should be back this week. So hopefully that will happen. I haven't heard back from them for sure, but hopefully they'll have that taken care of this week. We had discussed and talked about cardboard. And we was wanting to approach the board as to cardboard being a charge rather than a no charge item. Now that we're not recycling, to bring cardboard in now has to go into the regular trash. So we're paying to have that disposed of. So the county is footing the bill right now for all cardboard that's being brought in. We have a significant amount of cardboard that actually comes in per week. We have approximately 15 tons to 20 tons per week that comes in pretty much on a regular basis for most of the year. Now, part of the year, of course, it slows down. But right now, in this period of time with pumpkin season and Christmas tree season, the cardboard, it picks up some. So right now, we're not charging anything for that. And we would like to approach the board to see if that was a possibility of a charged item now.
When you say charge for the cardboard, what about the everyday person who brings in their cardboard?
Well, in our way of thinking, as far as household trash, those people that are bringing in the cardboard is paying their usual amount for the bringing in of the trash. So those people, I assume that's going to be a no charge item for them as long as they've got the sticker. And what we're talking about is more of the commercial use. For commercial businesses who is bringing cardboard in, we're not charging for right now because, well, the process was that we recycled and we bailed it up and we sent it out. Now that's not a possibility for us to be able to do. So for the commercial use, and there's two businesses that bring in quite a bit of cardboard per month as far as that goes. So we would like to approach that as the commercial side of it, not residential.
One other follow-up question. There are some businesses in town that recycle their own cardboard.
Yes, sir.
I think Food Lion, at one time Napco did. Any of them be interested in taking our cardboard where they could recycle it and make money off of it?
That would need to be an item to research. Those questions have not been asked to those entities, but we can. We can ask those entities if they would accept that cardboard. It's quite a bit, but they may have the means or capabilities. If they are interested, then that would be an avenue to help us reduce the amount of tonnage that we send out.
I mean, it's just a thought. I don't know if they would be or not.
What's the cost to dispose of cardboard per tonne? Sixty?
So, well, it's $56 a tonne, I think it is, at the present time to discard our tonnage.
That's the landfill charge, that's not the tipping fee.
You've got to ship it.
Yeah, that's what.
The tipping fee is $75 a tonne.
Seventy-five?
That's what.
At the facility.
You say commercial, I've got a concern, the food closet, which is a nonprofit, creates a lot of cardboard, because the food we get in comes in boxes. They be subject to this charge?
Well, as far as nonprofit organizations go, you know, that's one of those things that you could make an exception on. For food closets, church groups, fire departments, those type of things, and that's nonprofit. But once we get into going, you know, we're going to make things more complicated than than what it probably would need to be. But, you know, I agree that nonprofit organizations, especially the 501(c)(3) organizations, that's not for profit, they're supposed to be helping the community and doing for those things. So, you know, I can understand that point, but.
May I make a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
If you use the numbers that David identified, at 20 tonnes a week, that's 80 tonnes a month, times 12 is 960, a year, times 75 is $72,000 we're talking about here. So if the thought process is to subsidize that fund by that amount, then you continue to let it come in for nothing. Since you are disposing of it just as you are any other waste, that's an amount of money that you have to deal with. Now, you could very easily, these producers of this cardboard may decide they don't want to bring any. They want to take it somewhere else. But at this moment in time, it's no different than any other piece of trash.
And for the residential customers, we still also have a charge for brush and those type of things that we take in in addition to the amount of money that each of us pays on our taxes for disposal fee.
Any other questions?
The 70, potential $72,000 that you identified, not recycling, we did, and we understand the change. Any, what would it cost to go back to recycling just cardboard? It must be a possibility whatsoever. Now, part of it is determined by the market, but it seemed as though in the past, that was one of the things that did have some potential value more than maybe the other thing, so. But I, not being aware of any of that market or function, I'm just curious.
And it's my understanding that the equipment that we was using to bail the cardboard is pretty much in disrepair. So it would probably have to be brought back up to speed if not replaced. So in light of that, you know, it's going to be quite a bit of cost. I do not know exactly how much. We could research that and have those things quoted. But it would be quite a cost to the county initially to go back into doing that.
Long term, I mean, would that, of course, I mean, I know you've got to do some research and get some information, but I'm just, I'm thinking long term. And to me, it's just, in my mind, I would rather see it recycled and repurposed, if at all feasible and possible. But at the same time, we can't break the bank. Interested in seeing what the cost might be. I mean, I know we need to do something different only initially, but I'd sure like to keep that part of the conversation until we rule it out.
We can do that. We can see kind of what it would cost as far as that goes and do some research.
Didn't, I didn't see, since I've been here, I haven't seen what type of revenue stream that recycled material brought in. I don't have a basis. We can determine cost of equipment and strapping and the equipment to move it and to find someone to haul, factor all that in. But personally, I haven't, I've never seen a sheet that identified what revenues were being created off that material.
There wasn't revenue to the county. The way the contract was structured is whoever got the contract to pick up trash for the town, got the recyclable materials as a bonus to encourage them. And they got the fees off of whatever they sold the recycled material for as an incentive for doing that contract.
The way that I understand that that happened was that that was the case, but all too often, storage of that material, they wanted to wait until the market was just right.
I understand.
Before they would ship that material off, which is what created some of the problems when I got down here with the uncleanliness and scattering of debris.
At least for more than 15 years, the county has not received any income from the recyclables. But it was a benefit to the county for keeping it out of the waste that was hauled off.
That was my understanding, that Mr. Chairman and County Manager was kind in failing to mention that the state of North Carolina was getting ready to lay a fine on us for the trash that was blown around, it was becoming a liability.
I'm just saying how it was structured, and that was more than 15 years ago.
Do we need a decision on this today, or is this just discussion? What are we looking to do here?
Is the rate or anything?
I would.
A little study on it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the proposed disposal fees so that we can start collecting and hopefully make up some shortfall. If later on, if we've got an estimate of how much it's going to cost us, also transport, do we have a market now? Those are things that are going to be a couple of months down the road. We've got the immediate problem it's costing us now. So I'll make the proposal that we accept the proposed solid waste disposal fees.
At the $75 per tonne rate?
How are we going to let our customers know? Are we going to give them 30 days, two weeks, six weeks? How do we implement?
In my opinion, a two-week notice would be sufficient on that. As to if we, if we, when they, as they come in, we give them a paper that says from now on, the cardboard that comes in will be charged a $75 per tonne tipping fee. That will help us recoup money that we're losing right now because those people that's bringing in, they're paying nothing, and we're paying $56 to get rid of it.
What's the transportation?
What's the transportation cost?
Seventy-five?
Yeah. So ours, our cost is, that we charge is 75. We can give them a piece of paper that says from now on, effective whatever date, you know, two weeks' time says, effective this date, Allegheny.
October the 15th.
Yep, October the 15th, say. Allegheny County Solid Waste Transfer Facility will be no longer accepting cardboard for free. It'll be charged a $75 per tonne tipping fee.
Chairman.
Sir.
Most of these, it sounds like they're coming in pretty frequent.
Yes.
And it's cardboard only that they would be, that they would be on their load?
Yes.
Identify it and weigh it on their load?
Yes.
But if there's some that are not as frequent, and they may not come in but once a month, and, I mean, how would, is there a way to notify? Because I'd love to be able to put it out enough to where everybody is.
We can also.
Wear it well in advance before.
Yes, sir, we can also put a notice in the paper that states the same as the flyer would.
Any idea how many potential people we're talking about or entities or roughly?
Roughly, no. We have two of the major ones. I know who they are, and I know what they bring per week.
Somebody brings in a mixed load? Guess it would all be commercial?
If.
And that, if they're hauling it on something that's commercial.
Could we not put a flyer in the bill? Monthly bills? That's another one you hit all your accounts like.
Does that exempt the nonprofits?
That's a decision that you would need to make, but, you know.
The board needs to discuss that.
Made the motion.
We need to involve the nonprofit chair, if we're going to charge him or not before we get into the motion.
I'd like to hear Mr. Carter's thoughts on nonprofit.
Thank you.
Well, we're a team here, so.
First off, I'm not afraid to admit I do not know what type of tonnage we're talking about with those groups. I only know the big groups.
It's a medium-sized dumpster, and we fill it once a week.
And how many, how many of those groups are there?
No, there's any other than ourselves.
This is a question for the board, is church waste exempt currently? Do something with it.
Church waste is probably charged to $98.
I think probably an individual from the church, or depending on their, each church's situation. I know that's kind of what happens at ours, one of the individuals who work with the custodial services just throws it in their trash and takes it that way.
Same with our church.
Be a bag a week or something.
Part of Methodist, they've got theirs, and they pull them out and they pick them up.
And I'm hearing that that has been an approved method of disposal for those groups.
Whether they're being charged or not, I don't know.
I don't see the problem with continuing that practice. I would just tell you that not knowing the bulk, but knowing that there are probably property owners out in this county that get stickers, businesses as well, are going to be a question about that practice. But if that has been the accepted and approved method of disposal for these type of groups, like we've already said a precedent.
I don't know that that's been accepted because I don't know that anybody knows what the practice actually is.
It's like we've got some questions. I would, I'll withdraw my motion. And we'll make a motion to table until the first meeting in October so that we can find out the answer to these questions.
I think that's what we need to do.
Would you like to have me to get an estimated tonnage on the closet, board?
Please. Yes.
That would give you a chance to check and see if any other businesses might want.
It would.
It's a possibility.
And I'm more than happy to call those places and ask.
Chairman, I think part of the purpose of this, I think it was just demonstrated, was we're not entirely sure what material has been approved for disposal. What has it? And these guys that are working at this facility, they've kind of been forced to do it on their own for a while. And each day I learn something. And today I've got a page full of what I've learned. But it surprises me, I guess is the way to put it, that whenever a fee structure or a discussion about acceptable material or it sounds like that's never been a discussion at this level. And if it has, please tell me I'm wrong.
Not the mind all the sense I've been here.
Mark and I have been here the longest, and I can't remember.
I believe, I believe there's something written into the ordinance about hazardous materials. I think that's, that's the only thing that we've got anything down on.
And I hate to say it, but that's the least of your problem. But people, people use that facility every day. And if we don't have, I mean, we can get an approved listing from the landfill that we take our material to any time of the day. Those are going to be generic as well, and apparently I've just done something. But my perspective, this board should adopt and approve acceptable material listing in your facility, adopt a fee structure that goes along with it, and you provide resources on the material that you can't accept, and where to take those and how to dispose of them. I haven't seen that. Then, you know, we're going to get into this fee schedule, and we're going to get into this dumpster fee schedule. And I will tell you that my head is just as sore from scratching it over that as it is over this other stuff. Because I don't know if you've ever formally approved these fee schedules.
Is that in our, in our budget?
Part of the budget. Part of the budget.
Did we adopt it? In the budget, but did we adopt it as a board for the fee structure?
Yes.
In the budget?
We pull it up and have an in-depth conversation about it? No. Identified it as no fee changes or wherever there may have been one. Adopted that sheet forward. I mean, all that you're saying sounds great to me. I would, I mean, I would be in favor of you analyzing everything and bringing to this board what you need from this board to fix all the areas that need fixing. It's my thoughts.
Probably need to know what the materials is going in.
You certainly have the experience and the history in that area to, to help us out there, so.
Glad to do that. One of the other items since we're on this, there are, there are, we have a group in the county that they are part-time residents. I'll put it that way, they're part-time residents. And they buy and throw away stuff just like anybody else. They're not charged a tipping fee. They don't get stickers because they don't own land or a structure in the county. The material that's collected as a result of that waste stream is brought to your facility. It's charged five dollars.
The figures on that, that we have collected is it's an estimated of six to eight tons per month. It's brought in for five dollars.
These are the things that we're trying to bring up that I just don't think there's been discussion on. They're not, they're not residents, they don't own property, part-timers. They're getting to throw away everything that anybody else throws away and not paying that ninety-eight dollar sticker charge. It's a, it's a five-dollar charge a month.
You can bring it in with them for the sp-
If they don't have a sticker.
I can speak a little bit to that from experience. I ran a store for twenty years. Started out with one dumpster. People would come visit from, away from this county, drive in, get gas. You look at their car and it was full of groceries and whatever they had bought someplace else. They would come up, go to the river, go camping or whatever. Sunday afternoon, Sunday night, they would fill the dumpster, my dumpster. Okay, I'll put a chain around it. Come back the next week and all these bags were piled up around the dumpster. These people brought trash in, emptied or whatever, dumped their trash in Allegheny, then left without paying anything.
Those were, those were overnighters or those were passer-bys as I'm hearing you. I'm talking about individuals who are here for seasons, in you overnight.
I mean, there's a lot of trash that comes in that's not generated here.
This is generated here.
I mean, it's, it's bought someplace else and they utilize it here and dump it here.
What I'm referring to is bought here, utilized here and discarded here.
It's still trash we have to pay to get rid of.
Chairman, if we're going to-
Somebody pays for it.
If we're going to get the financial report, we're going to have to make some progress here.
Yes, sir.
They've got to leave at thirteen-thirty.
My thoughts is table is to give them time to decide what the material's going in.
That was my motion, Mr. Chairman.
That's a motion. Just move to the mid-month would be the next step.
Mid-month?
Be good with you, David.
It's fine with me.
The county manager's expertise and guidance.
Materials that's going in there.
Yes, sir.
See you in a minute.
Yes, sir.
Motion and second and further discussion. You know, favor raise your right hand. Have a- Thank you, sir.
Sir, thank you.
Financial report.
A few papers out before I start, Mr. Chairman.
Ma'am?
Good afternoon, thank you for rearranging just a little bit. David and I have interviews at one-thirty to put another custodian on board. This is just the basic report like I presented to the board last month. We are going to do, make this a monthly report during the day meetings. Year-to-date revenue, two million, one hundred eighty-two thousand, nine hundred seventy-five dollars and thirty-four cents. I will tell you that Sydney and I are a little behind on journal entries and things that need to be imported and posted in the system. So we're, we're trying to get caught up with that, but being down some staff, we're having to do it as we can to, to handle our day-to-day duties. Year-to-date expenditures, three million, three hundred forty-five thousand, six hundred seventy-four dollars and eight cents. Below each of these columns, I do have the percentage too. The revenue's about thirteen percent of the total budget. Expenditures is about nineteen point nine percent of the total budget. And of course, the approved budget is sixteen million, eight hundred twenty-three dollars and seventy, seventy-five, eight hundred twenty-three thousand and seventy-five dollars. Trying to get in a hurry here. And it's, we're twenty point eight percent along in the year with the budget. Does that make sense to everyone with the percentages?
How far along should we be?
Far along should we be? Well, that twenty point eight percent is just, that's two and a half months into the budget. Did you want that exact number where we need to be? Okay, I did not do that, so I'm sorry. Just did the percentage of how far along time-wise we were in the budget.
If it's expenditures and a revenue, we have a problem.
Well, like I said, Sydney and I, we're-
Timing issue or what?
We're looking, we're running behind on posting things in the system. We, you know, this money, most of the money has been received in the bank through our tax billing and things like that and the things that come in through the finance, finance office day-to-day. But there's paperwork and entries that go in behind that. And usually they are about a month behind, but we are a little bit behind just because we're down staff.
If you're behind on revenue and I-
We're behind on revenue, yes, sir. Those expenditures, AP and payroll rolls right along just like normal. So that's, that's one reason an interim finance officer had to be appointed so those checks could just roll on with payroll and AP and that's what you're seeing. Okay? Any more questions about that?
Answer, Mr. Prince, it's about twenty-one percent. Right.
Twenty-one?
Twenty-one. You're two and a half months into your twelve-month average. So if you're looking at how those space out, you're around twenty-one percent.
Have a number yet, how we ended the year as far as fund balance?
We do not. We had a CPA that was here week before last, something that the auditors last year asked to be done to help close out the end of the year with those postings. Sydney and I did do the major. There's a rollback that has to be done with payroll and a few other things, like utilities and things like that. It has to be rolled back in the year. If it's a June utility bill, it has to be posted in June. So we have those things that, that have to be adjusted every year. She was here for three days, three and a half days. She is still working on some of that. So we will be emailing back and forth with her to finalize all, all those numbers. But that is still a work in progress.
Do they have a timeframe on the, when we will know the fund balance?
At next meeting, I should have you a, yeah, a number for the fund balance. It's just those adjusting and being, being without a finance officer. You know, our previous finance officer was out quite a bit with her health and things, so we're just making sure we're finding everything.
Add one thing to that.
Yes, sir.
Twenty-twenty's been a great year. A lot of things have happened, but there's a lot of things that are, that are, that have happened and happened over time that is hard to explain. When our previous finance director left, there were a number of things that remained to get done. I'll just say that. One of those things includes closing out the previous fiscal year. April and Sydney can attest to this. I, I am amazed at that process because we go deep into September getting invoices from the previous fiscal year. And that makes it tough. Not only when you have individuals that have followed that practice, but when you, when you start new, it makes it extremely tough. This year isn't, or last year isn't closed out yet. We're three weeks into September. That's, that's an issue. And we're going to take strides to fix that going forward, but right now, it, it's a, it's a task. And April and Sydney have done a really good job of trying to get us to this point. I'm, I'm firming my belief on that. Just like a lot of other things that's happened this year, we're going to have to have a little patience and we're going to have to have some understanding. And we can toss out numbers, but I'm not, I don't want to toss anything that's not right. We're going to have the right numbers when you get it. I just want to point that out. Your, your finance department as it exists is doing what I believe the best that they can with what they've had to work with.
Question, do, if at all possible, do we try to take advantage of if we pay on time, there's a one percent discount sometimes? Or, you know, some vendors offer discounts for paying fifteen days or ten days? Try to take advantage of that?
As far as I know. So one of the things, one of the improvements we will initiate next year is delayed vendor requisitions. Whatever the reason, I, I think we need to improve in, in, you know, we have a cutoff date and I don't remember what it was this year, it was May something. May fourteenth. We had a whole month and a half left in that fiscal year. We need to be following up on our end and not relying on the vendors to send their requisitions when they find the appropriate time to do it. We need to be bringing those invoices in at our request and not at their disposal. That's what has driven some of our rollover keeper into the next quarter is those bills that come in that were services or, or materials prior to June thirtieth, but those invoices not getting in on time. We've got to square that up. We can't let invoices lay out there for two or three months and then apply them back. That's what the auditors do, they, they credit them back to the previous fiscal year. But we've got to do a better job of getting those invoices in.
Any other questions?
I would just point out the bank balance also on this report. The bank balance is, as of Friday, ten million, four hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty-four cents. This time last year was at seven million, five hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars and seven cents.
People taking advantage of the discount, ain't they?
Yes. A lot of, most of that's taxes that is coming in, so, okay.
Good luck, April.
Quick question, just, just to clarify, you, these numbers is here-to-date? That's, that are here at thirteen percent? And you had indicated they're under, I mean, what the actual is.
That is correct.
Is that under because of help? Just, I mean, once, once the help is restored where we need it to be, will that be, will that lag shorten? Or, I mean, is that kind of your thinking with your, okay?
Talk about that a little later.
Okay, all right, just, thank you. I understand, I mean, the lag and the help and all that, I was just curious if that was something that the help would restore or, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And one thing I'll point out, I think maybe you have a report laying somewhere with the local spending.
Yes.
Sydney in the back is the individual that put that together. Now granted, somebody's going to have to hold it before I can read it because it's so small, but I think that was a, a common request over the weekend. We will include this in every mid-month meeting moving forward so you can see a type of local spending is there.
Expand that to two pages and enlarge the print.
Must have a small printer to print that.
Okay. Got to move back up to the High Law BDC service server room, we'll get through that.
We need to do that, Mr. Chairman.
DD server room quotes. DC server room quotes.
I don't mind to, to start the conversation. I think in the last few months, there's been communication about potentially locating, you said maybe at the BDC and trying to utilize and understand how that is. Well, as we were going through that, it was discovered that the server room in the BDC is, is probably warmer than it should be. And in order to correct that, one of the, the top quote is strictly for the server room. If you want to cool that server room down to a more desirable temperature, then we have an idea on what that would cost and it's nine hundred and forty dollars. When we were talking about this situation, it was also brought to the attention that the lobby area and another portion of the BDC, like this building, it operates off different controls and your office may work my office and all that. So a second quote was got to, I understand fully, provide adequate HVAC to the facility. Talked about the contract earlier, it's laying here somewhere, but in the agreement, the owner, which is the county, is responsible for two things, all outside building maintenance repairs, roof, walls, parking lot and structural foundations. And two, major electrical plumbing repairs and HVAC repairs and replacement. So that is written in the agreement that we've tabled. If we want to get that server room into a more adequate climate, that's an idea of what it's going to cost you to do it. And I know Commissioner John Irwin, you've been involved in that as well and And I know Commissioner John Irwin, you've been involved in that as well, and whatever you can add, I would appreciate it.
Basically, you know, it's in the agreement. Here again, we discovered it. We've got a, BDC is managing the building. We've got to pay for it, but they should have notified us. And we didn't know about it until one of the people that was, that had servers in there, and the server was saying that giving them problems, it was overheating during the summer. Now, it will not be a problem during the winter because we won't have the additional heat. Surprising thing about the whole thing was, we've got an HVAC system up there, I believe a two-ton system, that it isn't even hooked up, that we replaced. Didn't even come into the building. That's how we're going to be able to set up a separate system on it. So we've got to maintain the building, we've got to maintain the HVAC, that server room has got to be cooled off. If we put additional equipment in there, it's just going to get worse. It's got to have a separate system. The whole thing is going to be about $38, let's call it $4,000 if they don't run into any problems.
It's not what we have in front of us.
I think you could get by with the server room, $940.
Yeah, but to take care, to take care of the lobby and everything else that they told us on. Server room be $1,000 or the 900, but other problem. Problem with the server room, it does have air conditioning going into it, but the thermostat is out in the, I believe, the lobby. The temperature would be fine out there, but you've got all these servers that are generating heat in the server room in different places.
Let me understand, we've got a heating unit that's not tied into all this? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we replaced it. And it was one for the library, and when they redid the library, they didn't need it, so they ran nothing to it. So whenever we went in and replaced all the equipment, we replaced an HVAC system. It wasn't being utilized with new equipment. It's sitting up there, not even running.
We have any money to do something like this?
$940, you do.
Is it 29?
Can readily identify 2,900.
$940 will take care of the problem up there, keep it to cool.
Body of contingency.
Solve the problem up there with everything.
A question on that. What I'm reading and what's been identified is, it appears as though they're going to be paying on to an existing system and bringing air conditioning.
Now, let me qualify that. Whenever the county manager and I were talking to the manager over there, he's the one that identified to us that there's an HVAC system over the library sitting there not even hooked up. Now, I think what that $900 is going to do is go into an existing system that's coming down.
One that's there being utilized currently, but not for this space. Okay, my concern with this is this could help the heating in the summer, but that same duct, when that system is running and heating in the winter, will be bringing now heat into that room. If there's a way to close it off, if it's not necessary. It may not be enough to cause a problem, but there won't be a way to regulate the heat because they're not adding a control, they're just adding a duct into there, which will bring heat or coolant, depending on whatever the thermostat is telling the system to do for whatever space it's doing it in.
Personally, I think you don't do either because of the colder weather that's coming. Lot of the days are gone. Think you wait and you analyze it. By that time, maybe there's additional funds that we can identify to fully correct the problem as opposed to patch it.
About March, April, readdress.
Last quarter, yeah, in the last quarter.
Keep to get there.
Make a motion, we table this for the meeting.
Motion here, second. Motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your.
Table certain, or just table?
Table. All in favor, raise your right hand. I vote. Let's see. We down to consent agenda? We got everything?
Telephone.
Telephone.
RFP.
Telephone in that.
Push over IP with teleconference capability. Two-hour battery backup, you feel that's sufficient? It's not internet, it'd be power. If it loses power, you'll have phone service for two hours.
I think as a, those are certainly things that can be optioned for more, but I think two hours would serve us at this point.
We have a, well, I know we've got a generator that we could pull in if this building loses power.
And if the appropriate hookup is in place.
Is there an appropriate hookup? So that's another problem we'll have to deal with in the future.
Prince first switch, I mean, all that stuff. I ask that in question form because I do not know the answer.
If I remember correctly, you'll save us about 50%. It's estimated that this will save, be a significant cost savings to us.
Long as we get everything installed by December. Thirty-day RFP process, you've got to review bids, I mean, there's a process to it. You can't approve it in December and expect 50%. I get 30 at that point.
In the future, there will be significant savings.
Is there a downside? This? Make a motion.
Well, second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Save money. Goldfinger.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. She didn't say good evening.
All right, so first thing this month, got the vehicle tax refunds, real and personal refunds and real and personal releases. You see significant increase in those numbers this year, August, when the tax bills go out. And so we've always got significant amount of refunds and releases, maybe not this much in releases. That's what we've got August this year. If there's any questions on any of that, I'll be glad to answer them.
Questions? Motion to accept.
Move.
Second. Motion in second, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right. I vote.
And you'll note on the report, you do have a new report in there, and actually, it's a report you were supposed to have been getting for quite a while now, instead of just the collection rate. It's the actual levy, what was paid and what's still outstanding. I was looking back at our August and several years comparing our collection rates, what I was looking at when I found this, and noticed that before we got our new tax system, I used to report this number to you, and by statute, am required to report this to you, but when we switched software, given this report, I just was given the collection rate, so I apologize for that. So that's what that is, if there's any questions on that.
Questions?
Okay. The license pl agency, plate agency month-end report, there was a shortage of 2150 when auditor came last week, I believe it was, that was reimbursed to us, so there is not a shortage. And the compensation, it was 4,320.85, and that number wasn't available at the time I printed this out for you. Next thing that's going to need your vote on, I have a request for an elderly or disabled exemption application. Meets all the qualifications, it just wasn't timely filed.
Andrew, your recommendation is to go ahead with this?
Would have been approved had it been timely filed.
You need a motion?
Say move.
Motion to second. Second tap.
Sir, all under.
They're all. Okay.
Okay, so move on.
Do it all.
Do it all at one leak?
We agree with her recommendations, I think we could do it all in one motion.
I think you already have. When you approved the consent agenda, I think you did all of her stuff.
That's the consent.
You.
Make it easy.
County manager's comments.
A couple of updates on our facilities. The old council on aging building, the mechanical engineer will be here again Friday. And a lot of these will just say work is continuing because, as you recall, we're in the design phase at this time, so the design work on that continues. Administration building, mentioned at one of your last meetings about a replacement unit for the roof of this, for the HVAC, that was put in last week, so that's taken care of. Honey South Main, the work continues to be performed on the earthquake study that we approved with Hemp Hill, Randall and Associates. The whole area is the same thing, they're putting that together for our insurance company. Courthouse, at your last meeting, we awarded E. Luke Green the contract to begin the internal moisture control and abatement, working with the courts to get that schedule configured. I will tell you that it looks like, and this was one of my abilities to negotiate with them, we have a good possibility of doing a lot of that work in the evening and night so as not to disrupt the court schedule. So I've got that wheel moving as well. And for those of you that's been by the courthouse, you saw the fencing that was around, we talked a little bit about that to keep our standards from entering the area where the brick may be a concern. That's been complete, so a lot of these are just continuing in the design and study for the insurance purposes. Glad to answer for any questions about it.
Got questions? Back up. We approved the September 8th meetings, I heard. We approved the September 8th meeting. Double check.
Put on a man.
Put on, pushing on.
Allegiance. Yes, it was, it was five vote.
Thank Commissioner comments. Mr. John.
Going to me. I'd like to commend the county employees as we've rolled through this earthquake process. It is something that is out of the ordinary, something that you don't anticipate. Been flying by the seat of our pants because it's not something that anybody has faced in the last 100 years. I am concerned about getting the money that the state of North Carolina has appropriated. It's my understanding that state of North Carolina will be distributing that money. Hopefully, we can get a process going. We have a number of people that are out of their homes, and I worry whenever the temperature starts dropping. Other than that, we are coming up on the political season. Please play, pay close attention. Things have changed with the death of Ruth Bader Ginsburg. The country is, I've heard it all my life, that this is the most important election of your lifetime. Now I'm beginning to believe it. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, and God bless America.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Prince.
I think the town looks great. I love the results of Streetscape. It was a somewhat painful process, but I think it's well worth it. Go up there at night to the restaurants, it's a pleasant place. Also, I'm concerned that, you know, we've got multiple parties in this county, and political signs are disappearing, and it is a misdemeanor, and I don't think we're being fair if we dispose of or take away or destroy another political party's sign, so it's going to stick, it's continue that process.
Thanks, sir. I got a short comment. I'd just like to mention the census. I looked it up, and it's of August 30th, Allegheny County is at 43%. So we need to get on the ball and get them sent in. The census regulates monies and so forth sent from the state and federal government.
And just a question for you, isn't that about $1,800 per person?
I think so.
That the census brings in?
I think so. That was August 30th, that's the latest information I had posted, but we really need to get them, get them sent in. And a lot of counties is in the same boat for some reason.
I'd just like to mention the quarter cent sales tax, how important it is, especially people doing early voting. They need to really consider the quarter cent sales tax. In my personal opinion, it'll save a property tax increase next year that the citizens of the county will have to have that burden put on them, and we can put part of this burden on tourists that come into Allegheny County, because we pay it and we go to almost every other county. That's all.
Ravens.
I just would echo Commissioner Prince's comments on Streetscape. It looks very nice, the striping is going down. I know I've heard a few comments about, it seems as though some of the lanes are narrow. I believe part of that may be because there hadn't been any lanes for so long, and we've just been driving down the whole road. I think folks can learn those lanes, and I think, I think it'll work out in time, but it does, it looks great. Good to see the activity back on Main Street. And I would offer and thank this board, the worship at the fairgrounds where we waived the fee last meeting at a Fenton Saturday evening, well attended for what it was and for how short it developed. And as of this morning, it was just a little over two hours that.
Streetscape looks real nice. I made my first walk down Main Street today on the sidewalk, it's real nice, and it's real pretty coming through there tonight. I see. We're in closed session, I hear a motion to.
Make that motion, Mr. Chairman, contention on a five-minute break before we go into session.
Motion. Motion, session, all in favor, raise your right hand. General Statute 143-318-118-6 personnel.
Bingo.
Bingo.